I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number two is the invocation. We have Reverend Michael Orr. See Pastor Orr here. Anybody on the council want to do invocation? Reverend Florrie?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to. Please pray with me. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for the opportunity for us to serve our community. We thank you for the chance to be here and provide the time and ask that your wisdom prevail and that the citizens' best interest is considered in all our actions. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Florrie. Appreciate that.
Thank you, David.
All right, so welcome to the city council meeting. Thank you all for coming. Item three is audit participation. That is covered on the screen. Please silence all your cell phones, devices, et cetera. Let's keep the meeting in the meeting. I'd like to welcome some scouts. We have some scouts here. Welcome, y'all. Glad to have you all here. Hope we entertain you and it's a good meeting, so glad to have you all here. Please feel free to ask questions. All right. Item four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes for February 5th, 2019. B is action regarding authorization of individual project order with Kimley Horn for our transition plan Phase II-B. Is it C that we're going to pull? All right, we're going to pull C. So then D, action regarding authorization of individual project order IPO with Kimley Horn and Associates for I&amp;I Study Phase II. E, action regarding adoption of resolution 2019-04 and execution of advanced funding agreement for Green Ribbon Program on system. F, action regarding purchase of one 2019 Chevy 2500 single cab pickup truck for Public Services Department. So we are voting on A, B, D, E, and F. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented by pulling item four, C, for further action.
Thanks, Patrick.
My second.
Valerie's second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All right now, let the record reflect, we have a quorum this evening. So item C, and for that, Public Works Director Rick Trice.
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council, this is a two-part action. First item, and you had previously in 2015 adopted an advanced funding agreement for the Bailey-Boswell Bridge, overpass, over 287. What this action does is cancel that previous agreement and substitutes a new agreement. An advanced funding agreement is essentially an agreement when local government partners with the state for a project that involves state funds or federal funds or is within the highway system, on systems what they would call that, then this is a standard form that the state uses that stipulates the responsibilities of the parties and also prepares a basic budget for the project. The only difference between this advanced funding agreement and the agreement that was done in 2015 is that it clarifies that the cities and the state are each responsible for their own cost and any cost overruns that they might incur. The advanced funding agreement doesn't obligate the city or the state, and in this case, the overpass doesn't include federal funds, but it doesn't obligate the state or the city to actually do the project. I mean, but it sets a framework in place so that the local government would follow state guidelines when that project is bid for construction. So with adoption of this, again, doesn't obligate the city to award a contract for the construction. That action would still come before the council at some point in the future.
Any questions, council? Any questions or discussion? Mary?
I just wanted to make it clear that the reason I asked for this to be taken out of the consent agenda is because I'm not in favor of the overpass, so I didn't feel right about voting for something that brings it closer to happening. And the other thing is, I found a discrepancy, and maybe Bren can help me with this, but the caption says it's being changed so that both parties will pay for the overruns. And from our background information, advance funding agreement amendment number one, under agreement number one, it says, "The agreement is terminated to change the project overruns from responsibility of the state to the local government." I mean, I read that to me, now we wanted to change this in order to have the city pay for the overruns instead of the state. Am I reading that correctly?
I think that that might be part of the basis for coming up with the new agreement, is that the old agreement was somewhat confusing. It was implied that each party would be responsible for its own cost. There's an attachment C that's in the agreement that outlines in a spreadsheet form what would be the obligations of the state and the local government. Again, the language in this new agreement just clarifies that you're responsible for your column of the breakdown, and that if you have an overrun in that area, then you're responsible for the overruns. So we're responsible for 100% of the construction. The construction has an estimate in the agreement, just an estimate. If it comes in under great, if it comes in over, then the agreement allows us to go forward, knowing that the city would be responsible for that overrun. We would not come back to the state in that instance for money, so.
So Bren, do you think the state could say to us? I mean, to me, it reads that we're responsible for all overruns.
And my apologies, I know we just visited about this moments ago. This is a little more lengthy than I had anticipated, and I don't feel prepared to give you a complete legal opinion tonight. I don't know what the timing for this item might be. I'm happy to look at this item in greater detail and directly address your questions from a legal perspective, but I'd be concerned, since I had not been asked to review the agreement or the amendment or the resolution for tonight's meeting, but I certainly could do.
Well, not being an attorney and just looking at it from the perspective of a layperson, it sounds to me like all cost overruns would be borne by the city and wouldn't hurt to have it reworded the way Rick described it. I mean, it just doesn't sound, it sounds like we're responsible for all overruns, so.
Mary, would you like to table this item and have Bren take a look at it?
If it, yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense.
Go ahead.
I don't think it's a problem to delay it to the next meeting. It's something that's going to have to be done prior to advertisement of the project. I would just read the paragraph at the bottom of the attachment that I mentioned earlier, that "The total amount of the local government participation shall not exceed the amount appearing above," which is the construction costs and the engineering costs. Those are costs that we've already obligated ourselves to, so, I mean, I think, I don't know if that satisfies your concern or not, but certainly we can delay it another week or another to the next meeting.
Thank you. Todd?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor? And Mr. Trice, I had the exact same question, exact same question that Mary had, and I'd asked for this to be pulled as well for the same reason.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
I just do want to clarify two things. The state is not participating in funding of this project at this time, are they?
Not in hard costs. They have overhead costs, which is not really identified in the agreement, but it's a substantial amount of money. It's, the Rindrick cost is $686,000, but there's no construction participation, no engineering participation in the project. It was, as if it were a locally designed let project, those are costs that a city would typically have in an infrastructure project.
And are they asking to be reimbursed for those costs by the city?
No.
Okay, so they're waiving those costs?
Under the previous agreement, there was an obligation to, if I can read my notes here, to put up some money, $700, I mean, $77,950. We had paid 27,950, and there was an amount due prior to award of the contract. That has disappeared, so that is another plus about the new agreement, is there's no other obligation to the state in terms of payments, so.
So essentially, they're waiving some of their ordinary fees?
Yes.
Is what I'm understanding?
Yes.
And at this point, we started out with a $9.1 million budget. This is projecting 12.3, so it's about a $3.2 million overrun at this point, but the county has kicked in an additional million. Is that correct?
They're matching up to, I think, $3 million from county funds, so dollar for dollar. I would say that this estimate, the construction estimate, I believe the current construction estimate's 12.3, so this estimate is a little shy of what the actual number is. But again, it's just an estimate, and it's really not mundane to the agreement. I mean, it's just an order of magnitude.
Okay, I'm just, sorry, I'm going to revisit what you just said about the county. You said matching up to $3 million? Can you clarify what you meant?
They had, is it $6 million that they filed? Go ahead.
It would be 1.5 million from the county to match our 1.5 million of the $3 million.
Right.
It was dollar for dollar up to $1.5 million.
Okay, so we were projecting potentially a $3 million overrun, and they're willing to come up with an additional 1.5 million. So essentially, we're seeing 1.5 million over our original projection, which was five years ago? Okay, all right, thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate it.
Valerie, you have a question? Okay. Any other comments? Any other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table item C from the consent agenda to the next meeting.
Second. Okay. All right, so, Mary made the motion, Patrick's second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All right, so moved. Item number five, this is the Monarch Project. This is a very exciting project we've been working on for a while. There's a pledge associated with it, but also I would like Councilmember Big Horse, she's been sort of taking the lead on this. I know she and Mary have both put a lot of work into it. I'd like you sort of to give a background on this, Cindy and Mary, where we are, and then I'll do.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Good to have you here. I'm excited about this project. This young lady sitting here in the front row is responsible for the new fruit trees in town and the community garden over here to the side of the city hall. She also, with Mary, wants to start a butterfly garden, and so everybody in the city can enjoy it. Talking with some people, they suggested that we take the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and this is a pledge that mayors commit to implement at least three of the 25 action items within a year. We've taken on eight, so it's pretty exciting. They said those who take on eight actions receive special recognition as part of the National Wildlife Foundation's Mayor's Monarch Leadership. Couple of the items is to communicate with community garden groups and urge them to plant native milkweeds and nectar-producing plants, plant a monarch-friendly demonstration garden at city hall or other prominent location. And another action we've taken is to facilitate or support a milkweed seed collection and propagation effort, and Mary has already done that. She has quite a collection of butterflies in her backyard. I have a friend that is a Texas master naturalist, and she would like to get together with the city and have a monarch tagging party, and we would go in and tag monarch butterflies and use the National Wildlife Foundation's database to be able to track where they go as they migrate from Canada to Mexico and back. So I'm excited for the ambitions of this young lady. And with that, Mayor, I'll let you read the pledge.
Well, thank you, thank you, Cindy. Mary and Cindy, thank you both for your efforts, and Zoe too, thank you for your efforts. So I've got the Mayor's Monarch Pledge that I've already signed online, and I'll read it. "The monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. We, the undersigned mayors and local and/or tribal governments' chief executives, are deeply concerned about the decline of the monarch butterfly population. Twenty years ago, more than 1 billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico. In the winter of 2014, only 60 million made the trip. The North American monarch population has declined by more than 90% in the last two decades. Monarch scientists attribute this decline to degradation and loss of summer breeding habitat in the United States and loss of winter habitat in Mexico. Western populations of monarch butterflies that overwinter in California are also in decline. Cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. Municipalities in particular can provide habitat at public parks, median strips, community gardens, and municipal buildings that serve as community hubs, such as recreation centers and libraries. Schools, homes, and businesses can all provide essential habitat for monarchs too. Simple changes in landscaping ordinances or school policies can make a big difference for the monarch. Educating citizens on how and where to grow milkweed is also a key piece of the puzzle. Creating habitat and educating citizens will benefit other pollinators that need healthy habitats as well. When mayors speak up and take a stand, citizens notice. Therefore, we hereby commit to help restore habitat for the monarch and encourage our citizens to do the same, so that these magnificent butterflies will once again flourish across the continent." And I signed that a couple weeks ago, so thank you all very much. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. I just remembered, I recently read an article in the paper that, good news, they overwinter in large numbers in Mexico, but that's been decreasing. But just recently, they found another area in Mexico that's very hidden and very remote where there were probably thousands, so that's kind of neat to know.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your efforts. Let's continue to just move this forward. All right, moving on to item number six. This is presentation by New Rock Companies regarding the proposed heritage at Saginaw Development and consideration and action regarding a resolution related to the same matter. For that, City Manager Gabe Rayon.
Mr. Mayor, the presentation will be given by the applicant. I might defer to the city attorney for some opening comments.
Just some quick, opening, brief comments for clarification purposes, because I think there's been some, perhaps some public misunderstanding or confusion about the nature of the request that's being made this evening. So the application tonight is not seeking zoning approval for multifamily on the property in question. The property is already zoned for multifamily, entitled for multifamily, and can be developed as a multifamily housing development. Tonight's application is a request for support and development funding from the city for purposes of supporting the applicant's application with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for their competitive 9% low-income housing tax credit application. This program is essentially, it's been authorized by the federal government and administered by TDHCA, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. It's highly competitive, and it is scored, points are allocated for each application within regions, and applications compete with each other within the various regions, and points are allocated in accordance with a qualified allocation plan that is published by the state. This particular application, there are obviously various outcomes potentially based on council's action. Support plus funding secures the maximum number of points for this particular application. No opposition secures a lower number of points, and opposition secures zero points. The reason why this is competitive is because the federal government through Congress has decided that in order to attract investment, to provide low-income housing, that tax credits is a manner and method in which to attract investment. So the 9% number, the competitive 9% number, is a percentage based on the value of the project, and this is a very simplified overview, and I'm sure the applicant, please chime in. I don't file these applications myself to clarify any misstatements, but these are tax credits that can be applied to personal federal income tax liability for investors. And so it helps reduce the tax burdens of investors if they agree to invest in the project. If the project is successfully selected, these tax credits can be sold, they can be traded, and the purpose is, as they say, to attract private investment, to build affordable, high-level housing for low-income individuals. And the rates that are set for the rent are based on the income that the potential tenants can demonstrate that they earn, and they have to reach, they have to not exceed certain federally determined levels. So that's a quick, very rapid overview of the nature of the project or the nature of the application. As I say, this is not a zoning case. Multifamily could go in without coming to the council for approval. This is merely to consider and evaluate the request for a resolution of support and development funding request as a component of this particular applicant's low-income housing 9% competitive tax credit application.
Thank you, Bren. Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks for allowing me some time. My name's John Boyd. I'm Senior Vice President of the New Rock Companies. With me tonight is Lisa Rucker, who helped create this application, Kim, who's manager of one of our properties, Claire and Chuck live in one of our properties. I'll take a minute to go through some of the basics, and I'd like to ask your city attorney to attend every future presentation I make, because that was, that was a good synopsis of what this program is about. And I'll start with the presentation that we put together, and I think most of this is out there. I haven't had a chance to meet with you folks yet. We're early in our process. New Rock has been in existence since the early 90s as New Rock. We're developer, we're owner, we're management company, we're a general contractor. We only build our own deals, we only manage our own deals. And so we've been in existence, like I said, since early 90s. I've been in this business since the 96, and the president of New Rock has also been in this business since, and specifically multifamily, specifically affordable housing. We have offices in Austin, Alpharetta, Georgia, Atlanta, and Florida. We have over 1,820, over 1,800 units in Texas, 9,000 overall, in 35 communities. We develop both family and senior restricted and market rate and mixed income, as well as affordable. Like I said before, we build, manage, and develop, manage, and build all of our properties. Our focus is long-term ownership. Part of that is obvious in that we're part of the, part 42 of the IRS code, which calls for long-term ownership to begin with, but also, nobody manages your property as well as you will, right? And so, long-term, to keep our properties in compliance with all the rules and regulations, we have that outlook, and we do, in fact, continue to hold our properties. In the package, there's a list of properties that we've developed in Texas, and on our website, you could get other properties that we've developed across the United States. Important point tonight to make is that the site that we've chosen is on multifamily, and one of the keys, one of the key factors I'd like to point out is that property is zoned to allow, I think, up to 176 units, which is 24 units an acre. It was zoned back in 99, I think, or 2000. We propose 120 units, not 176. Keep that in mind. When I say mixed income community, the tax credit program allows for income-restricted units, but we're also including more than 15% of unrestricted market-rate units as well. In other words, they're not income-restricted. Anyone can walk in the door, as long as they meet the criminal background checks, the credit checks, and can provide verifiable income for two and a half times their rent, they can move in. So keep in mind, this is a true mixed income, meaning not all the units are restricted to those income bands. We do propose for restriction to age 55 and over. One of the things you'll hear me talk about is the demand for units, high-quality units for folks over 55. We are not building assisted living. We're building independent, senior, active adult communities. We will have that age restriction in a land use agreement that follows the land, and so that will be a long-term land use agreement as dictated by the program. Three stories, garden-style elevators with a large clubhouse and amenities center. We'd like to fence and gate our community. We have placed on the current site plan, although conceptual, a walking path and some green space on the north side of our property, which backs up to the resident, single-family residential. Reminder that we have onsite management and maintenance staff at all of our facilities. Remember that we're privately owned, all these properties are privately owned, and we pay property taxes. We are not asking for any ad valorem exemptions whatsoever, so we'll pay all of our real estate taxes, school, city, county, all the rest of it. There's an overview of, we say eight acres, we just got our survey, and it's 7.34, by the way, that is properly zoned. So technically, it's 7.34, part of the old airfield. And you can see there where it is a little farther out, where it's part of the larger acreage on McQuarrie. Then there's a snapshot of our current conceptual site plan. Interest is on the south, and along the top of that screen, you'll see our walking path, landscape buffer, if you will, then parking, and then our buildings, and that's important so that we maintain a bit of a buffer between our neighbors. And there's an overview as it lays, it would lay on the earth. Everyone always asks me, "Why did you come to our town? Why are you here?" Well, the same reason you're here. The amenities, the community, that's what we want for our residents. We strive hard to keep our communities safe and decent, high-quality. We place $250 a unit, per unit, per year, in reserves for replacement for long-lived items, and those are set aside at the bank that we can't touch until those items come up. So we build up reserves for those long-lived items, the roofs, the parking lots, those longer items, longer-life items. But the proximity to all the services and the recreation, I mean, the park right down the street is a key. I think that's a great amenity for our residents, and yours as well. The deconcentration of similar-type housing, I mean, we know there's another tax credit property in town. It's in another part of town, so it's not concentrating the same type of apartment communities on top of each other. So keep that in mind. I spoke about demand. I have a demand study from our market analyst with the income bands for our income-restricted property, units, that there is a current pent-up demand within this market area of 549 units, and on the overall portion of this side of Fort Worth and surrounding areas, it's 3,457 units of demand, and that's quantified by independent third-party market analyst, which that market study will be part of our application to the state agency. So we know there's significant demand. Remember, 55 and older, I'm there. I'm getting, I've gotten there faster than I thought I would. So think of 55 and older, and don't think of skilled nursing facility or assisted living necessarily. I mean, most of our residents still work for a little bit and need to bring verifiable income. Again, zoned 24 units an acre. We've got some preliminary elevation studies, but that slide you saw in the very beginning is a property in Fort Worth called Heritage Park Vista, very similar product. And so our exteriors, we will need to, and let me make it clear, these are conceptuals, we will need to go to your staff and make certain that all of our design criteria meet your standards. There's been some discussion, for instance, of a higher mix of brick on the exterior facade, and so we commit tonight to working with your team to make sure we adhere to all of those. This elevation is based upon, like I said, the product that exists on the ground in Fort Worth called Heritage Park Vista. There's our floor plans. There's our floor plans, very functional, very livable, large units, and, and very, very marketable, if you will. Some photographs. And there's our clubhouse, which includes our leasing office. We have a lot of activity at these clubhouses for our residents. We'll get into that shortly, but it's a large clubhouse for a community center, if you will, for many activities that we do. The clubhouse amenities include, you know, we'll do a pool, fitness center, tech room with internet access. We've been doing some billiards parlor and game rooms, rooms for meetings and conferences and other things that the seniors might want to have. A larger grand ballroom, picnic areas throughout, and then the back porch as well. We entertain crime watch programs, we do some arts and crafts, coffee bar, beauty shop. There's some photos of some of the interiors of our clubhouse. So your city attorney thankfully gave a little bit of an overview of the tax credit program. Remember, it's an IRS part forty-two, Tax Reform Act of nineteen-eighty-six, under George Bush. What that did was attract private, private equity, private money into apartment deals, into, and investment into affordable housing. So what is affordable housing? You know, there's a formula out there that no one should have to spend more than thirty, thirty-three percent of their gross income on rent mortgages. And so when, when someone's spending more than thirty, thirty-five percent, then it's not considered affordable anymore. So if you take a look around, it's a, it's a crisis to some degree when we talk about And this program has placed thousands and thousands of units on the ground. You drive by them every day, and you don't even know that they're tax credit deals. So the, so what happens is, we'll apply for the credits, the state agency administers the federal program, allocates an amount of tax credits to a number of properties around the state, a number of developers for specific properties like this one. The developers will then go to JP Morgan Chase, Wells Fargo, Boston Capital, other syndicators, Raymond James. And we will achieve a price for those credits, usually, and don't quote me, because it moves just like any other market. But right now, the price of those tax credits, depending on the location of the product and the developer and the track record of the developer, we can get ninety, ninety-two cents on the dollar. So as we sell those credits to that, say, let's call it JP Morgan Chase, they become an investment partner in our transaction, and they watch over us throughout the entire compliance period. And here's why. The tax credit program allows the IRS, if we fall out of compliance, charge too much rent, rent to people who don't qualify, allow poor maintenance to happen, deferred maintenance and other things, that limited partner can kick us out, bring in another partner to make sure we stay in compliance. So you can understand why we have a long-term outlook from that perspective, not to get kicked out of a deal, to stay in a deal, keep the property operating, keep our residents happy. And so that equity that's raised from the sale of those credits goes toward the construction of the property. It's not a handout to the residents, it's not a handout to us. We sell it, we use it to build the product. We also go get a mortgage loan, just like you would for your house. The key here is that we, through the sale of those credits, we can, we can keep the mortgage lower, and therefore, keep our rents lower. And due to the program, we signed a land use agreement that says we won't increase our rents more than what's allowed under the program. In addition to our investment partner, the state agency comes out to our property every year to monitor compliance. I've been through some of this, but keep in mind, this is not what you think of when you think of low-income housing, quote-unquote. This is not Section Eight. It's not public housing by a housing authority. We are privately held. We are for-profit, by the way. It is how I make my living. And we do bring in not-for-profit agencies to help us with resident services, but remember, this is not, we're not asking for any tax exemption or any of that. Mostly, it's a financing mechanism to bring extra capital in, in terms of equity, to build the deal. And this last comment on this slide, if, if typically, you would be able to build an apartment community and put about thirty percent of your cash into the deal and get a mortgage for about seventy percent, this program can, can recreate seventy, sixty, seventy percent equity so that your mortgage is only thirty percent of construction costs. So it's kind of a flip from... One of the concerns we hear is, you know, what's this going to do to our property values when we live close to affordable housing? There have been some studies, and there's more than just this one, but here's one from Trulia, that the impact is negligible on surrounding. This is not Section Eight housing. Keep that in mind. These folks have to, our residents must, and when they apply for a unit, must, we must be able to independently verify their incomes so that they can pay their rent. The rents are set by some formulas, as set by this program. We also do some credit and criminal background checks. And Kim will speak to the, more specifically, on what those are in a moment. And they've got to believe, to show us verification of at least two times the rent and income for, for that household. Again, mixed income, where we'll have a number of market rate units. We'll have one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. Our square footages are large. There's our rental ranges from four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars a month to thirteen-hundred a month for the larger two-bedroom. Those are gross rents. Very competitive units. High quality is what we strive to achieve, energy star, nine-foot ceilings, you know, a lot of walk-in closets. And long-term, high-quality is what we're after. Within our property, we also offer services to our residents. And I'd like to introduce Kim. Kim is on the New Rock team. She manages the property, Heritage Park Vista.
Hello.
Go ahead.
So we do a lot of stuff. We have, like, we have potluck dinners, we do bingo twice a week, we keep them active. I mean, we have Silver Sneakers yoga, we have exercise classes. So they're constantly active. So we have a lot of that. We have a lot of people that come in and actually talk to the residents. They sponsor events, food, dinner, a lot of education. So yeah, they're, they're pretty spoiled. Yeah, so they're pretty spoiled, but we keep them busy. And that's what it's all about. It's independent living, it's staying active. And most of them live by their families, so their families are the ones that actually seek us out, they place them, because it's just so active. They stay active. That's what it's all about, just keeping them active, happy, you know? Right? Right? There are two of our residents over here, so... You want to say something? This is Claire.
I just, we've lived there eight years. I've lived there with my husband, and we love it. And I'm always very proud to say that's where I live, because it's, it's beautiful building, and, and it's well taken care of. And Kim's a great one to try and keep you busy, but that's the nice part, you don't have to if you don't want to.
Yeah. It's optional, it's not like mandatory, you know? But yeah, we, we try to keep them busy. Yeah. So yeah. And it's a fun place to work, too. It's fun to work with them, so...
Can you speak to the background checks right quick?
Yes, sir. We do a thorough background check. We check their credit, their criminal, we check rental history, we check everything. It's very thorough. So everybody's, if you follow the criteria, you're approved. So, yeah, we have a very strict criteria.
Thank you, Kim. And your city manager, excuse me, city attorney spoke to the, sorry, Gabe, the, spoke to the process. We'll submit a full application on March one. That's, you know, next week, basically. Time flies. Then what will happen is the state agency staff will score all of the applications. We're one of roughly two-hundred-and-fifty applications across the state. So they'll, they'll score the applications through the end of July, and then make their award. The scoring is set forth in the qualified allocation plan, which was signed by the governor back in December one of the last year. So they'll score them out, they'll submit, post online those scoring logs as they are updated. And so we won't know for sure if we have an allocation of tax credits or not until the end of July. So in terms of a timeline, we would still need to submit, and this is important, too, we still need to submit a full set of drawings. That includes, you know, the survey, that includes a plat, that includes building plans to code, you know, things like getting with your fire marshal to make sure that we have turning radiuses for the trucks, we have all the, the code-specific items your team gets a chance to review. We don't have those ready yet because it's conceptual. So we would submit those and hope to be able to, hope to be able to start construction late this year, if we're successful with an award of credits. And then twelve, fourteen months, maybe sixteen months, so late twenty-twenty or early twenty-twenty-one, I suggest to you, we could be completed with the construction. But by the end of twenty-twenty, we should have our clubhouse and our first units available. So there's a timeline. To be competitive in this type of financing, yes, we are asking for a resolution of support. And I want to be real clear that in, in years past, the state agency wanted to see not only local support, like a resolution, but they wanted to see a commitment of funds. Well, that's not the case anymore. This year, it's de minimis, if you will. So what we put, what we've requested is maybe a fee waiver of five-hundred bucks to show that level of support. But we don't need hundreds of thousands of dollars. The numbers work as long as we get the, the amount of credits that we're asking the state for. So keep in mind that you can reduce a fee or a building permit fee or something, and that's up to you guys, not me. But this resolution would, would say, we recognize a significant demand in the community for this type of, of living for our seniors, and that it's zoned, and, and we would support it. Here's a few photographs of other seniors' products that we've done. Heritage Park Vista is over on Ray White, which is where Claire and Chuck live and where Kim manages. And so what you see there is a carbon copy, or what we'd like to reproduce on this site here in Saginaw. And I will open it up to any questions that anybody has. Thank you again for your time. If there's some questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Janice, do we have anyone who wants to, any citizens want to speak on this item? Okay. All right. I'll open it up. Please approach the mic, please. State your name and address for the record, and I'll give you three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, sir.
My name is Peter Dawson in six-forty-four Fosswood. I live right behind us in the Willow Vista Estates. I understand it's zoned, multi-zoned, already multifamily. I understand that, and I'm just speaking from the heart here. I'm not speaking with notes or as eloquently as some, or from a slideshow. I'm sure these people are great, looks like a great product. A lot of the people in this area, unfortunately, who aren't here tonight, don't want it. I think if you were honest with yourselves, none of you would want it if you live in this neighborhood as well. And the reason being, there's a lot of, a lot of stigmas with low income. And the reason there's stigmas is because a lot of them are true. Now, I can't compete when they bring their best tenants right here, and they don't want to, but they're going to give you the layout of the perfect scenario because they're trying to get your bid. Us that live there, first of all, pay a lot more than thirty percent to our mortgages. We're in phase two right over there, that you have three-hundred-thousand-dollar houses and about to enter phase three. All these people are concerned. One of the concerns, too, with low income, you have hanger-oners, you have grandkids, you have children of these people that are there. The income is low, so they're able to put people in there. Now, they'll tell me, there's stipulations that there's only so many people, and so many people can be on the rent, and that's all good intentions, but eventually, it falls through. It falls through because it just does. And I feel, to me, this is the center of Saginaw right here, where City Hall, the rec center, the library. And to put it in this place where you're around your most vulnerable people, our wives and children running around in the park, running around in the rec center, if you do have criminal elements that get brought in here because of that, that is something you need to look hard. I think this is already probably a set deal, whether it's them or the next person in line, but there are people that have built these houses, that want to live here for the school district, want to live here for the park, and there's plenty of places in Saginaw that would be closer to stores for these people, closer to banks, closer to other kind of elements that would be great for elderly people as well. I think this is the wrong place, and I'm not the only one that thinks this. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir. Someone else? Mr. Pete?
Hello, sir. Counsel members, John Pete. I live at six-four-four Fox River, right back there. This is social engineering, and I think you're getting tax credits from the city if you get support. Is that true?
Mr. Pete, speaking into the microphone, just so everybody can hear you.
That's true. I made a comment about that myself. I did. Because nobody can hear you in the back, and you've got people up there looking at us because we're live. We'll be. I think you get tax credits to assist you in building this regardless, right? This is just for the tax credits to build a certain subsection of your planned development. Is that true?
These are federal tax credits?
Yes, sir, to assist you in building it.
That we sell?
To assist you in building it. To assist you in building it, to provide you with extra capital. Yes. This is a subsidy to the developer to, a tax credit for him. This is social engineering. And this is throwing Granny and Grandpa off the bus, but I'm fifty-eight myself. Fifty-eight myself. Okay?
Mr. Pete, speaking into the microphones, everybody can hear you. And also, don't, don't question them, just, just say...
Got it. I think this is going to get put in here regardless. I know the multifamily's coming, but the low-income part, y'all have a choice in the matter, for everybody else that's been here for a while. I know you, Ms. Copeland, will support it, Ms. Big Horse, you will, I think Mr. Tucker will, Mr. Mayor, I think you will, too. I think most of y'all will, because it's going to make Saginaw supposedly look good, but you're going against the wishes of a lot of people. And it's the wishes versus the thoughts and the dreams that come along with owning your own house, your home, and the equity you build up in it. The developer can say, there's no changes in the makeup and model of the city, but it's true, it happens. And I guess there's another one over there in between, in the industrial section over there, Mariposa. I think there was a, a comparison made to that. Is that true?
It's a senior living.
Yes, sir. I think so. But, uh, wrong place. So I know this was impromptu, but when that gentleman spoke, he spoke from the heart as well. I got a chance to address you all before, but I think y'all got your minds made up before you even had people talk to you. So, sorry about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pete. Somebody else? You want to speak, ma'am? Please. Come on up. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Angela Hardon. I live, the whole address? Six-five-seven Creek Point Drive, just two blocks over from the proposed thing. when he was describing where it was. I couldn't see what was going, I couldn't read the words, I couldn't see it. Do you know what's on the other sides?
Nothing right now.
What's going to be there?
Uh, how is it zoned?
It's neighborhood, the commercial, and the other one's office. One, the one on one side's office and the other is the neighborhood commercial.
Do you know for sure? Do you know for sure? Shouldn't you know for sure?
It's on the slide. We can pull the slide back up.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it. I couldn't read the words. Can you look?
Yes, yes.
He can pull the slide up.
The lady in the west on the corner is office part. The lady in the right, the rest is crap. It's neighborhood.
So that just means the hunk in the middle? And I, I just don't understand this. So that just means that the hunk in the middle is multifamily and not the east and the west? Is that what that means?
That's right.
Can you zoom in on that at all?
Here's one right, right here in front. Right here, come around, right there. That way you can read it.
So, please, right here is the senior?
That's, that's the proposed.
That's a multifamily.
This is office?
Yes.
And this is?
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial.
What's that mean?
You want to explain that, Gabe?
Retail.
Generally retail uses, restaurants, to sell, that sort of thing.
So you're saying it's a good idea to put a 55-plus next to retail? I mean, wouldn't that be a little dangerous for them? People just pulling up in the parking lot? Do y'all not watch the same news I watch about what goes on in parking lots? I just think it's kind of iffy on both sides. I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me. The whole thing doesn't make sense to me. You know, I've been in this McBee home for two years and it is lovely, great neighbors, and I just don't want to ruin my value. I've already contacted as many people have, a Realtor, because I just can't do it. I just can't live where there's iffy people who don't believe the way I believe and take care of their own business. You know what I'm saying? So this other, now you're doing a, something else that y'all aren't even, that y'all are not even sure of? I don't really get that part. I'm confused. So maybe you need to search your heart in what you're doing to the people that voted you in. And I use the word "vote."
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? We know more requests, Janice? Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? It looks like that there may be.
You can come up and speak, sir. Please. I just want everybody online to be able to hear you.
Okay. I'm Lawrence Lakey and live in Saginaw. I noticed that it looks like they're taking about 90% of the building that's already there. And it seems like they would have to take the building down to develop this. So are they going to tear down part of the building that's not on their property? Seems like that would cause some legal problems, that you're tearing down a building that's part of it's not on your property. Why didn't they take the whole building instead of just 90%? You understand what I'm talking about?
I saw, I saw the picture, yes, sir.
All three tracts are under the same ownership now.
All three tracts?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a problem.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Come on. Please, sir.
My name is Russell Rice and I live at 5828 Arbor Lawn in Fort Worth. I'm a Fort Worth real estate broker and I'm working with New Rock on this transaction. First, I want to encourage Zoe. My wife planted a butterfly garden and I tried to get rid of all the caterpillars and it failed, so. If you can learn, learn from my mistake, let the caterpillars live because they'll turn into butterflies. Briefly, I had a, a career with Textron, traveling around the country and had the privilege of living in Peachtree City, Georgia, which was a large planned community from the start. And then we moved to Cary, North Carolina, which was another large planned community from the start. And those communities thrived and did well and they had the privilege of starting with just a large stack of land and allocating, zoning and planning for different economic status residents. And we found that there was a buy-in to the community for those that were low-income people and very wealthy people. And homes were provided in the 1,200 square foot range to 8,000 square foot range. And the quality of the residence was not solely determined by their, their income. There are some very kind, great residents that are lower-income people. And for them to have affordable housing was very important because they, they're not in it for the money, they're in it for the lifestyle, whether they're teachers, firefighters, policemen, ministry workers, et cetera. And so I think there may be a misperception. I'd just like to encourage the council to consider providing support for the resolution because this is a quality developer, quality project. And for someone that's involved in ministry or other vocations, it doesn't pay much. We have some retired missionary friends and they would be someone that would want to live in this, this facility. So I'd just like to stand in support of the idea that the misperceptions are not reality, that the reality is a good quality project and, and some very kind, good resident folks would enjoy the, the rental rates that will be provided by this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else? If not, Brendan, you want to wrap this up?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. Just before you all consider this item, I want to provide you with my candid legal advice. And ordinarily, I do this in closed session, but I think it's important to hear in open session. So while you evaluate this matter, you may not base your decision on this particular application on the following criteria. Number one, any objection you may have to multifamily zoning. The property is zoned multifamily and therefore that's, that is a moot point. Number two, you may not base this on race or demographics, perceived race or demographics of the potential tenants of this facility. Number three, you may not base your decision on the age of the potential tenants of this particular facility. Number four, you may not base your decision on any consideration related to familial status. Whether someone has grandkids or children, how many folks may be living in any particular unit. And if these are, this advice is based on federal case law and federal law and state law. You may not base this decision on your possible opposition to federal tax credit law. That is existing, accepted federal law. You may not base your decision on perceptions regarding socioeconomics and the characteristics of the particular possible tenants of this facility. You may not base your decision on unsubstantiated claims regarding depreciation of neighboring property values. And finally, you may not base your decision on unsubstantiated claims related to fears of criminal activity or criminal paths of potential tenants as they are unsubstantiated. And the law does not support basing your decision on any of those measures. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but I just, I wanted to set the stage for your all, you all to have that final decision with that legal advice in mind.
Thank you, Brendan. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions? Any questions for the city attorney? Other comments? Somebody, do you want to speak, sir?
Just briefly, basically, kind of fix up.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Hello, my name is Thomas Weaver, 516 Robert Drive. I came here tonight to, to hear this information because I'd had questions and I wanted to learn more about it and find out exactly what it was because I saw the same things that a number of people brought concerns about with low-income housing and, and things like that. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I do a number of, of things with the city and raised my family right down the street from where this is going to be at. So I had some concerns that I just wanted to get answers for. And so a large part of what I have comes from making sure that my family and the residents and businesses, things are being done with their best interests in mind. So thank you for allowing me to have a few moments to talk. So, um, really, I think a lot of the concern comes with dumping, not dumping, but having a large population built right there on that road, which gets very busy. And I know that we have a lot of traffic and people have a lot of concerns about the traffic. It is zoned already for that. I did see where it was 120 units versus the 176 that I think can be placed there. That was a positive to see. I do have some questions. You said it wasn't Section 8? That's, that's goo, good to know. When it comes to the income verification and being able to place their reduced rent to the income and the considerations that the city attorney brought up as to what you can, I, I do question what sources of income people can provide to be able to qualify, to be able to live there? And whether or not any other government-assisted income is being used to be able to help people qualify for that? Or whether it's income that they are getting from non-government assistance? And whether or not that's something that can be considered as well? Because like to have residents that are able to come in and are, you know, elderly population that can be taken care of. I'm also concerned about what happens to the point where they do need assisted living and what that next step is from here to where they go? As to whether or not this is being done to kind of relocate some of the existing Saginaw population? To free up their residence to be sold to new residents that are coming in and helping fuel businesses and providing value to the residents and the businesses that are already in town? So those kind of basic questions, I know there's a tight timeline for next Friday at first for the application that they need to submit, but those are just general questions that I'm now churning in my head that I don't know if we'll have time to address before the first. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, any other comments, counsel? Mr. Attorney, be good.
I have nothing further. I'm available for questions if there are.
Counsel, any other questions for the attorney? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we not offer a resolution of support as requested.
Yes, sir. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Any other motions? No other motions, we will not take action on this item. Item number seven, Consider Action Action Regarding Appointments to Advisory, Recreation and Parks Board. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've had a resignation of Chris Hayworth, place number seven, on the Advisory, Recreation and Parks Board. So as the council has done in the past, we've moved alternates up. So the staff would recommend that we move Gregory Gerami from first alternate to place number seven. Move Charity DeVille from second alternate to first alternate. Leave the second alternate position vacant for now. We will be advertising for people interested in serving on our boards and commissions. We do annual reappointments, appointments usually the end of May or June. So we would, don't think there would be a problem leaving that open until that time.
So move.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, there is none. Thank you, Janice. Item number eight, Consider Action Action Regarding Appointments to Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay, we've had some changes in staff and so it's necessary to make some changes to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. We need to, in place number three, that is a person that has to be involved in animal welfare organization. We need to remove Kayla Wells. She's been unable to attend meetings because she's in Dallas. And it's recommended to appoint Ryan Jacobs. He works with code enforcement and animal control for the city of Fort Worth and has agreed to serve on this. We've talked with city attorney and this does meet the requirements to be involved in animal welfare organization. In place number five, we need to remove Destiny Dozier. She is no longer employed by the city and we need to appoint Christina Pratt. She's one of our animal control officers. Alternate number one, who also has to be involved in shelter operation, operations is Jared Smith. He has transferred to the inspection department. So we need to remove him from that position. And we can't move the alternate up to that because that position has to be involved in shelter positions, or shelter operations. We have a, a new person that will be, is on board to be hired and go to work within the next month. And we will come back and probably appoint that person when the time is right for that. But for now, we would leave that, or suggest you leave that alternate number one empty or vacant.
Thank you, Janice. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you, David.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, there is none. Thank you, Janice. Appreciate that. Item number nine, Consider Action Action Regarding Any Matter Related to Roles, Duties, Dis, and Discontinuation of Saginaw Finance and Audit Committee. For that, City Manager Gabe Graham.
Mayor and counsel, I'd like to stand and face you mostly because my mother's watching. So, hi, Mom. As you know, I'll be going halfway across the world soon in Myanmar. So I look forward to the next council meeting. I'm going to try to watch if I can. I'm also going to try to put as many items as humanly possible on that agenda because I won't be here. I'm being silly, just kidding. So the council created a few months ago some subcommittees. So these subcommittees are non-quorum bodies of the council. They have no legislative authority other than to serve as a review body. I, I tell you all this often, council majorities make decisions. In the words of Forrest Gump, Forrest Gump is the greatest movie ever made. I remind this to the Director of Economic Development often. But Forrest Gump said, "I'm not a smart man, but I do know what love is." Well, I am not a smart man, but when we have four people, and it doesn't matter which four of you, we have policy direction. So our finance audit committee has completed their task at this time. When I'm finished, I'd defer to the committee members to speak. But the finance audit committee has reviewed our annual audit. We had a glowing report. The council received that report this last meeting. The only other item for the council as a whole to review in the future is financial management policies, which we've been workshopping over a series of months. At this time, we're waiting for the financial plan that City Council commissioned Louis McLean, an independent consultant, to finish a financial plan. My recommendation to you will be to bring those financial management policies to the entire council at that time. So with that, I recommend that we discontinue the finance audit committee. The most transparent way for us to do business in the future is to bring items to the entire council. So I'd defer to any members of the finance audit committee and again, recommend that it be discontinued. And so long, guys. I'm going to Myanmar Saturday.
Anybody else?
You want to speak?
David?
Let, let Patrick.
Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's probably premature to dissolve the finance audit committee. Finance audit committee, the, our most trusted and long-term-serving council member is a member of that committee. And Gabe, I presented to both you and the long-term-serving council member 19 questions related to that policy. You have yet to respond to those questions and the committee has yet to respond to those questions. So until they've responded to those questions, I think we should leave them intact.
That's great. My recommendation to the council is, is this, council majorities make decisions, individual council members do not. The council as a body and with a majority will enact any financial management policy in the future or no financial management policy in the future. So my intent with Louis McLean, an independent financial consultant commissioned by the city council, is to come back in May and bring a policy for your action approval.
So the council did not commission Louis McLean to develop a policy. The council commissioned Louis McLean to develop a five-year plan. You've asked that Louis McLean assist you in the development of that policy. A draft of that policy was presented last Friday on the 8th. We were supposed to take action on it tonight. As a result of my questions, you suggested to table it until May after the elections.
Councilmember Farah, that's false. If I wanted the item to come before the city council for majority to take action, I would have conferred with. city council, uh, for majority to take action, I would have conferred with the mayor in accordance with our council policy approved in March of 2018 and asked for the council majority to take action. So, what I'm recommending to you, the most transparent way for us to do business is to come back with more information, bring that to the entire council in May. The other kind of confounding variable, once upon a time I was a math major, that's a Jeopardy word, confounding variable. Uh, the mayor's a scientist, so he can appreciate that.
[laughing]
Our legislative session is underway, as you know, in Austin. There's a, a strong possibility that the rules for local government finance will change. It makes better sense for us to discuss policy in the future when we know the ramification of those rules. So, uh, us taking action is premature. Uh, I tell you this often, I don't make de- decisions, right? Um, not even at home. My wife's the boss. I make recommendations. I will bring a recommendation to you in the future, to the entire city council, and request your action. Whether you approve it or deny it, I don't mind. I, I can count to four. So, um, what I'm saying is, let's get rid of the, um, subcommittee. We will take this to the entire council in the future, and, and I'll look forward to your action.
So, answer this question. Who will answer my 19 questions?
Uh, maybe I'd defer to, uh, Mayor Proton.
I do plan on addressing each and every one when I've had time to do that, and I will answer them. I did not this weekend, as I told you I would, uh, because of some personal issues that, that came up. But I will answer those questions. I do believe that the committee was good as, as an educational process for some of the newer council members. I enjoyed the time. I think we had three meetings. Is that correct, Kim? We had three meetings. Uh, we met with our securities advisors that talked about the, the bond ratings and the importance of, of maintaining, uh, a good credit rating for our bonds. One of the things that, that they did mention affects that is whether or not you have a written policy. We haven't had a written policy, and we've been working on a written policy that follows along some of the policies we've used for many years within the city. Is that correct? Uh, we do want to tweak those a little bit. I don't have a problem holding off on doing that tonight until we see what the legislature's gonna do, because it may play into, uh, what we can or can't do. So, I'm not trying to push things off so much as I don't want to make a decision prematurely that may be affected by what the state requires that we do. So, um, it, it's not a matter we're not gonna decide, it's just a matter we need a little more, a little bit more time to decide. In fact, in dissolving the committee, I believe it does bring into play all of us to hear everything, and then the ones not on the committee don't have to ask, "What did you hear?", and we don't regurgitate that information correctly and totally. You get to hear it directly, all of you. So, it, it just didn't seem that we were able to accomplish, three people, what the seven of us need to be doing.
Makes sense.
Valerie, you want to say something?
I just said it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to, just to reiterate, the importance of having a non-quorum committee is so that that committee can work directly with staff and possibly engage folks from the community to develop policy that the community desires. The policy that I have reviewed abolishes our 5% total cap on debt, which is a policy we've been practicing forever, which is probably the reason we're in such good financial shape we are today. It abolishes the 35% cap on our debt service. It suggests that we raise our total tax limit to $2.50, and I'll point to the policy areas in which this happens.
Uh, council member Farah, that's-
So, so, one, one last point, and, and what's, what's important to understand here is that we're, we're gonna be making decisions soon on a project that is significantly over budget, okay? And we don't have policy in place that dictates how that's funded. So, we're just gonna start reaching for different areas to fund that, and we certainly do not know exactly how much over budget it will be. So, these are areas of the policy where these 19 questions are geared towards, and I expect an answer from folks that are working together with our financial team, with people in the community. And we're not having to have that conversation right here as a legislative body for action. It's actually worked out from three council members that can make a great recommendation to this body, and I'm wondering why they're not being asked to make the recommendation to the body. Are you making the recommendation to accept the policy as written?
Not yet.
Okay.
And, and as I stated earlier, the 19 questions are pretty detailed. Those are not answers that we're gonna be able to answer like that. They're, they require some research, they require a lot of time, and I don't want to answer shortly without having that time to spend researching those questions.
And you want to do that on your own and without the benefit of the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions for Gabe? Anything else, sir? All right, so, uh, if I lost what my, uh, so, we're still on item number 10, or item number nine, sorry. Uh, any other questions? I will entertain a motion. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, uh, move that the consideration in action regarding any matter related to the role, duties, and discontinuation of the financial audit committee, um, happen.
I'll second.
So, uh, my, my apologies.
Go ahead.
The, the agenda item is worded broadly so that you can do anything, so it's, it's actually multiple different options. If, I think staff's recommendation is dissolution. Um, if, if, if that's what the council's, uh, selection is, then I, I think the motion should be worded to move to dissolve, uh, the committee.
Then I move to dissolve the financial aid, um, the financial audit committee.
Okay.
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand?
I was opposed.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on, item number, this is nine, no, 10. 10, sorry. Consider Action in Action Regarding Any Matter Related to the Economic Development Committee. For that, City Manager Gabe Bray.
My mother more than likely is still watching, so hi, Mom, again. Um, similar song, second verse regarding our economic development committee. So, the council took action at your previous meeting to not pursue, uh, economic development funding by sales tax. So, the council chose to bring to voters a reauthorization of our, um, street, dedicated street sales tax. I think that that was the initial intent behind creating an economic development committee, to explore an economic development corporation. Uh, what I would like to submit to you is the same thing. The best way for us to develop policy is out in the open at a public meeting like we are now. Uh, in the future, I would recommend that all items of policy concerning economic development come to the entire council. Uh, and I would recommend that, um, you know, until such time that, that council chooses to pursue, uh, a corporation or a different structure, that, that staff comes to you directly. And, um, staff, I'm recommending to you that we dis- discontinue the economic development committee. I may defer to any of the members to, to speak, uh, on their thoughts regarding that.
All right, thank you, Gabe. Appreciate that. Yeah, I think, I, I agree that, um, since we're not pursuing an EDC at this point, it'd be best to move forward and bring all the decisions back to council. It'd be the most transparent way to do business. So, no issue with that. Uh, anyone else want to comment on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as a member of that committee, on December the 17th, I circulated, uh, suggested bylaws to the committee and received no action back from the committee on those bylaws. Those bylaws do establish a path to develop an economic development corporation. That path is critical to developing an economic development corporation, and I think what we're about to find as we get into our workshop tonight, that the single most important item, first goal, six council members agree, is to develop that EDC. So, since that is the first goal and the top priority of the first goal, to develop the EDC, I'm wondering why we're suggesting to dissolve this committee. It's a very important committee. Bylaws have been presented. No action on the committee has been taken on those bylaws, and I'm asking why, from my fellow committee members.
I, I can answer that, Mr. Mayor, mostly because, uh, council majorities make decisions, not council, um, individual council members.
Sir, the council, the council appointed the committee.
Can I speak?
No, sir, I asked my fellow committee members, not you, sir.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Um, yes, I was very honored to be selected as a member of the economic development committee because I consider it a very important part of city government. It takes being proactive and using good planning principles, and those are items that I'm very interested in. Uh, it became clear, I thought it was a great idea, but once it existed, it became clear that we had different ideas about what our roles and responsibilities on this committee would be. So, I think dissolving the committee would be a good idea, and I think if we decided to reinstate it at some point, we should workshop the subject with all seven members and decide from the seven members what the roles and responsibilities of the economic development committee should be.
Mr. Mayor, the only other item I'd like to add is that the, the council voted unanimously to bring the street sales tax back to voters for, uh, their approval to, to potentially reauthorize that sales tax. So, I can tell you with certainty, we're not in the near future proceeding with an economic development. That was a unanimous vote of the entire council, so, I, nothing further to add.
So, I do have one question for Bren. Bren, is that tax the only way to fund an economic development commit- corporation?
It, so, a, a separate type B corporation, that, that is the only independent way to fund it, because the case law and attorney general opinions hold that because it is a semi-separate entity, the Texas Constitution prohibits the council from funding it directly without receiving adequate consideration, uh, for that funding.
So, there are no other funding vehicles that could be used to finance an economic development corporation?
If, if we had an economic development committee that reported to the council, and it was merely advisory in nature, and the council took final action, uh, I suppose you could characterize that as it being funded through the general fund.
Yes, sir.
But it wouldn't be a, a final decision-making body, but it, absolutely.
So, let me, let me reiterate what you just said and what I understood you to say, is that absent the tax, the sales tax funding, the only way for an economic development corporation to survive would be to have a non-quorum advisory buffer between the legislative body and the EDC itself.
No, I, 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 I'm not saying that. I, what I'm saying is, in, in order to have a type B corporation, in order to fund it, we can create it. The only way to independently fund, fund it with its own stream of revenue is through a sales tax election. Otherwise, it can only be funded through donations. The, the only, the only other way that you can have a separate body, uh, make recommendations on economic development matters is to create an advisory committee. That would not be a corporation, though. So, I, I, that, that maybe sounds like it's splitting hairs, but the, the, the answer is that the only way to independently fund a type B corporation, which is, uh, the, the corporation anticipated by statute, uh, or a type A corporation, is to approve an independent sales tax revenue stream, because the Constitution prohibits the general fund and the city from funding those corporations.
Understood. So, by dissolving this committee, there is nothing that can serve the community in the area of the economic development committee other than this legislative body?
Uh, that, that's correct. The, the city council would be the sole final, and, and only body, uh, to make finally binding economic development decisions. That's correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might add, um, I would echo at some point in the future, Council Member Copeland's comments. Should the city council, uh, as a majority body, decide to pursue this in the future, we could very easily come back with the guidance from the city attorney, with a defined scope, defined, uh, marching orders and, and tasks that, uh, the committee could pursue in the future. I'm merely recommending that, uh, we discontinue for now, and at some point in the future, we may bring it back. But until then, the best course of action and the most transparent is to bring it to the entire council.
All right, thank you, Gabe. Uh, any other questions for city attorney or Mr., Mr., City Manager? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we dissolve the economic committee.
I'll second.
Charlie, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Sir, all right, moving on. Uh, we are at item number 12. Item number 12 at-
Sorry, 11.
Oh, I skipped 11. I'm sorry. I've been moving ahead all night. Uh, item number 11, Consider Action in Delegating the City Manager Authority to Approve and Execute Any Confidentiality and Non-Disclosure Agreements on behalf of the City. For that, City Manager Gabe Bray.
Um, Mayor and council win. We have, uh, perspective, and we'll get into this a little bit later, uh, regarding our strategic plan, but when we have prospective new businesses coming to the community, whether that's an entertainment venue, a restaurant, a corporate business relocation, there's kind of a, a standard, uh, agreement called a non-disclosure agreement that these businesses bring forward to the city. The idea is that, um, by signing a non-disclosure agreement, we say that certain private details of the, uh, the business at hand will be withheld from public knowledge. Um, because if we're, um, potentially negotiating or I'm bringing to you to, to approve an incentive negotiation in the future, I, I don't have the authority to approve in, incentives. Uh, council majority does. That, there's a, a certain decorum that, that, uh, private information is, is not shared publicly. So, I might pitch it to the city attorney. This is a very common practice. Should you, uh, grant this authority, um, you know, I will basically, uh, have the ability given by the council to sign a document saying we're not gonna share, uh, personal financial information with potential prospects. We may potentially sign, let's say, 10 of these and only come to the city council to discuss incentives with, with one. Um, but the business community wants the comfort of knowing that, that private financial information is not gonna be, you know, uh, put out on, um, uh, social media, uh, to, you know, rival people's posts, selfies, and, and what they had for dinner. But, um, this is really a, a standard practice, and with that, I'd, I'd defer to Bren.
And, and I can add to that. A, a couple of you have come to me with some questions about this. Um, obviously, the concept of giving the city manager authority to sign agreements that you haven't reviewed is, on its face, seemingly ill-advised. That, that's for the legislative body to do, but the, these agreements are not, there, there are no business points in these agreements. These are all, this is just a, this is a legal document that states, um, "We'll provide you with what we consider to be proprietary information about our business for you to evaluate." Um, that, that information is accessible by staff and the council. You all are not considered members of the public for purposes of this information. These agreements also, and I, I review each of them, they also provide that there is an exception for the Public Information Act. Public Information Act request is received, we have to brief the issue and send it to the attorney general's office, and it's incumbent on the business itself to make the argument that the information that they provided that is responsive to the request is in fact proprietary. And if the attorney general disagrees, we have to turn it over. Um, you all will have full access to it. It, it, these agreements also state that the provision of this information does not constitute an agreement to, to relocate. Uh, there's no zoning approval, there's no economic development incentive granted. This is just to start the conversation, but they want the confidence of knowing that we will all not voluntarily release this information. Um, you, you all have the full authority to evaluate it. Uh, it, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Uh, it's been a long night. Um, the, the, so, the reason why we're bringing this to you, this is what I was gonna say, the, the reason why we're bringing this to you is because these agreements provide that the, the signatory to these agreements has been duly authorized to sign it and bind the city and all its officers and employees. And I- And I explained to Gabe and to your economic development director, you don't have that authority. You have not been authorized to bind the city. So this is a request for permission so that when we have a sort of a request to consider information, that we don't have to say, "Well, the next meeting is a week from Tuesday, and we'll get that legal document approved and have the mayor sign it just so we can see your books in the first place." So that's really what this is. As I say, there are no business deal points in these types of agreements. They're really just a legal agreement that says, "We won't voluntarily release information." And I always make sure that the Public Information Act is added to it as an exception. And any requirement that we destroy any information that they give us after the negotiations are concluded, I always make sure that the Records Retention Act is also added as an exception to that requirement, so that we're consistent with state law.
And I view this as another tool in our toolkit of economic development. It's another tool to help us move things along. We've been very good at pursuing economic development opportunities, and I don't want something like this to hold us up. So that's why I view this as important. And again, we're not authorizing Gabe to make any binding deals on our behalf. Everything still comes transparently to the city council. So it is just another discussion tool, so he can open discussions with potential economic development opportunities.
So he is binding us to an agreement?
He's binding you all to, if you request access to the information that's received, he's binding you to not disclosing it publicly?
That's not what Patrick meant.
So just to make sure that I understand the request properly, this is a convenience request?
Correct.
Okay. What prevents the mayor from executing the same document outside of this meeting?
He hasn't been duly authorized.
The mayor himself?
That's correct. That's correct. So the council has to, and it doesn't have to be the city manager. If we want to give the authority for future agreements to the office of the mayor, that's all, he's shaking his head, so.
The mayor's the elected official, and that is someone who is binding us as a council and an entire city, and it doesn't matter the benign nature of the agreement, it's still binding us to an agreement.
It's not binding us to an economic development agreement.
That's correct.
Right.
But it's binding you to a confidentiality agreement. That's correct.
It's just so nobody will talk.
Okay. But what I'm hearing is that we're doing this in the name of economic development. Okay, that's what I heard the mayor say.
Or business relocation. There doesn't, it doesn't have to be a discussion about incentives. It can just be, "Hey, we would need rezoning on this particular parcel. Let me share with you a little of the detail and information about the type of business that we run," because zoning is discretionary.
I understand. I think what my concern is, is that we are granting a power to a non-elected official that an elected official, who is essentially, he is the CEO of the city, does not have that power.
I want to make sure I understand your question. So the mayor would not have that power either without council approval? So who you pick as the person that signs, on the bottom line, I don't, and that's for you all to debate, the relevance of which person signs. But either way, that authority would need to be delegated so that the person signing could truthfully say, "I've been duly authorized by the governmental body."
Mr. Mayor...
It could be either or?
Correct. It could be either or.
So if we put both of them on there?
You could put both of them on, absolutely.
Okay.
I just have a question for the city attorney. Is it common in your experience to have elected officials deal directly, or?
Typically, typically, in my experience, a staff member, the staff member that's been having the discussions with the business that wants to share the information is the person that's authorized to sign. You're binding the community, you know, it's obviously, anyone you delegate is subject to oversight if there's an abuse of discretion after the fact. But again, the scope of these types of agreements are limited to, if you share your information, I promise not to freely give it to the public. That's it. And it does not make any assurances of affirmative relief in the future for any discretionary matter, zoning, economic development, plating, et cetera. It's just, I want to show you confidential proprietary information, and we want everyone who would have access to it, that's all the officers and employees, to be bound by a document that says you won't release it publicly except on court, by court order or order of the attorney general through a Public Information Act request.
All right, see any give question?
I do, and just to help me understand, what you said makes sense, but once we get to a point where we do have a binding agreement with a particular business, then that information becomes more public?
Not necessarily. They may still have proprietary information, but the agreement, if you all reach an economic development agreement, you rezone by ordinance, approve a plat, those documents are all public.
Okay.
Okay? But their personal financial data showing their profits, that's not necessarily, that's not going to be an exhibit to an economic development agreement, and they may still want that information to be maintained confidentially. But as I say, any final agreement that's approved, if one is approved, would be subject to public disclosure, especially if public funds are being used.
Basically, I'm sorry, basically, we're not hiding anything from the public, other than what we have in DIA.
Yes, and the only thing that we agree to not release publicly is what they give to us and characterize as proprietary.
Who defines that?
So if a Public Information Act request comes in, the...
Who defines what is proprietary and what is not?
Usually, the agreement provides that they characterize what they consider to be proprietary. Look, if they provide it to us and we say, "This isn't, we don't think this is proprietary," we can turn right around and give it back to them.
But that's our discretion.
That's absolutely...
And that's the concern, is that the ultimate authority of the city, being the mayor, should be empowered to do that. So I'm having a hard time with a non-elected official using that discretion without the mayor's consent or without the council's consent, it's just signed, without us understanding what is being presented. Now, if we're able to see what the nondisclosure agreement is before signature and we can weigh in on it, that makes sense to me, but I've got to tell you, the public has elected Mayor Flippo and has invested their confidence and trust in Mayor Flippo, and I think that Mayor Flippo should be empowered to sign those documents and use his discretion as to whether or not it's proprietary.
Gabe, you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I may just make one brief comment, and that is, the city operates under a council-manager form of government, and the reason being, you all are elected politicians, right? There's a clear separation of duty. For me, I am not a political entity. I am appointed, and I serve at the pleasure of a board, so I am completely removed with whatever political dynamics may be. That's why I think many cities choose to have staff handle this function, because they don't want to get into the political end of the spectrum, which is, you know, you were, you all were elected to provide vision, to take action on items, not to arrest people or put out fires or make recommendations regarding incentives. Just a clear delineation of authority within the council-manager form of government.
And also, let's clear up, I think, some misconceptions out there. I'm not the CEO. I'm the chairman of the board of directors. Gabe, Patrick, can I speak, please?
Yeah.
I am not, you're the CEO. Gabe runs day-to-day operations. I have a full-time job. We all have a full-time job. I cannot be out there running economic development, talking to people day after day. That is Gabe's role. That's why we hired him.
Mayor Flippo?
Patrick, can I finish, please? Thank you. So we hired Gabe to do a job. We entrusted him with this. We're just getting him another tool to go out and recruit economic development opportunities, which is what we've asked him to do. We made that one of our priorities. Absolutely. So this is another opportunity, another tool in his toolkit to go out and do this. I don't want us to lose that on deals because we can't quickly sign a nondisclosure agreement. Gabe will not make any binding agreements that will not, they will all come to the council. The council gets told transparency, the council makes all the decisions. Gabe makes recommendations. This allows him to discuss one-on-one with companies and get their financial information, get details, to see if it's something we want to pursue. It may not be a company that we want to pursue once we see their financials. It may not be a company we want to offer incentives to once we see their financials. Well, we don't know that, and they don't want to turn over their financials without this agreement. It's a very simple thing. I think it's a good opportunity for Gabe, so.
So we are, you cannot delegate authority without responsibility. And I want to point out, section 602 of our charter says this very clearly, "The mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city." You cannot delegate that authority.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Gabe, if you're done, I think Mr. Lakey wants to...
Yeah, I'd be too.
Please, approach.
Lawrence Lakey, again. What I'm wondering, if Gabe has the authority to sign approval for the city, does that mean that this obligates all the council members? If they see a document and they don't know it's confidential and they accidentally disclose part of that, are they liable?
Why would they not?
That's a question for our city attorney.
So if we authorize the signing of a nondisclosure agreement that binds the city and all of the officials, and it is released, it is accessed by a member of council and then subsequently released by a member of council, then that could violate the agreement. That's correct. So there could be liability. Now, whether that would be personal liability, I would, that you would violate it on behalf of the corporation.
Now, in the business world, as an employee, we had to sign individually this kind of document. We weren't authorized through another person to do this. So if you're going to be looking at confidential information, you should be the one signing the document for nondisclosure, not authorizing somebody else to do it for you. Does that make sense? You understand what I'm saying?
But since we're...
That's in the business world. Each individual has to sign it. If they're going to be looking at the document, they have to sign nondisclosure...
Bren, it's my understanding that we are allowed to, since we're not citizens. If Gabe signs that, will you explain that to us?
I'm sorry. What was the question?
The question was, if Gabe signs a nondisclosure agreement, how are we allowed to see the information?
You're not considered members of the public for purpose of the Public Information Act. You're officers of the city, and this binds the city, so you would have access to it, and you would not be violating a nondisclosure agreement by viewing the information.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, are you done answering your question?
Did you, were you finished?
Thank you.
Other cities that have the city manager have the authority to be the person who signs these nondisclosure agreements, how do they, how is that justified by those cities? To kind of answer some of the questions that are coming up here.
So it varies from city to city, and it can vary within each nondisclosure agreement. So, but the ones that say that you've been duly authorized to sign, they would need to go, there would need to be some form of council approval. There may be occasions where these documents are signed without council approval, but each city is different in terms of its involvement of members of council with information that's provided. Some cities, the departments review the information on their own, and they don't bring it forward to council unless there's something to recommend, and members of council meet during council meetings to consider the information that's provided. And of course, if it's an economic development matter, it can be provided in executive session, but oftentimes, the documents aren't mailed or emailed to members of council, and so there's no real risk, other than if you all receive copies of it. But the way some cities do it is, staff just retains the information and doesn't share it with council until an agreement is reached.
And I have two comments. One is, six of us up here, and Charles was not on the council at the time, so that's why I'm excluding Charles. But six of us went through a very rigorous process to determine who our next city manager was going to be, and it was, well, it was unanimous to select Gabe as our city manager, and we have given him a vote of confidence. And I think, in my opinion, even discussing this to the degree that it has been discussed is inappropriate, because I think we should put all of our trust in him. We did so when we hired him. And if it became a problem in the future, would it not be our right to then take away that authority?
Absolutely. It's a revocable...
So we're not really taking, I hate to even say risk. I mean, I don't even like the fact that this is being discussed to the extent that it is, as if he were not worthy of such a, such a, such a sortie.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate the kind comments. I'm very happy to be here. If it's acceptable to the council, you know, these agreements would first be reviewed by the city attorney. If the council chooses, you know, I can disseminate that immediately to the entire council so that everybody's aware. Again, we may potentially sign 10 nondisclosure agreements. We may only get to where we would discuss with one, right? It's a numbers game with prospects and potential relocations, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to not speak for the entire council, but I do agree with Mary. And as a council member who interviewed all of the folks that we hired, I want to say I hired Gabe to run the city for us. And this is just a matter of allowing him, as the mayor said, tools to do that, and with all good conscience, I support allowing the mayor, or excuse me, allowing the city manager to speak to potential economic development candidates in a manner in which they can trust his confidentiality and providing this document so that they can guarantee that it will be kept confidential, and it is a vote of confidence, and I agree with Mary. I don't like to belabor it, but I did want to say that I support Gabe in representing me in discussing these type issues with potential new businesses.
Charlie, do you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were... All right, any other questions to discuss, and we sort of beaten this. Bren, did you say something else?
So I have to intervene. My apologies. Been trying to address many things at the same time, many different balanced legal issues. To Mr. Farr's point, the charter, and I apologize for not having prepared by seeing this earlier, but I would like to get this right, and I appreciate Mr. Farr for raising this issue. This is not a typical provision in the charter, but I do see it here, and my apologies, Gabe, for not seeing this earlier. It does provide that the mayor is required to sign all contracts. So, again, my apologies. We can delegate the authority to the mayor. I have some concerns about this language that says, "He shall sign all contracts." That language arguably requires that you do have to sign any agreement entered into by the city. So I apologize for this exercise in debate, although I'm glad we had it. But, so I do think it's advisable that someone be given this authority. It does appear that your charter limits the ability to sign all contracts to the office of the mayor only.
Gabe cannot sign any nondisclosure agreements?
I'm concerned, because they're styled as contracts and not just a waiver or a form of some kind, that that would be exclusively your domain pursuant to this charter limitation.
Is that an item that... Is that an item that was possibly addressed when, with the charter review committee?
And I'd have to discuss that with my partner, who was the attorney in my office that, to do that. I see Dolph shaking his head, that that, that was not.
I don't, I don't believe any of that is in the approved ballot language.
I don't recall seeing that either.
So, then, then does that just scrap this request?
It, it, it doesn't scrap the request, because you can still authorize the mayor to sign these documents going forward.
So, Gabe could negotiate a non-disclosure, take it to the mayor to sign it, and then he would have a binding.
Correct.
We can do that.
So, that just could, would delay things.
It'd be the same way it is.
Yeah.
It, it, it would certainly be more expeditious than waiting for an upcoming council meeting, especially in those months where you may cancel a council meeting.
All right. So, if I sign this, Gabe and Alora will still have access to the information. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Or be signing for the city as a whole.
You'd simply just be the authorized representative on the document.
And once again, everybody has to keep it confidential.
That's correct. It would bind the entire city, all members of council and all staff members that would have access to the information.
Very good.
All right. So, do we need a motion to make? Do we need a motion?
You, you, you need a motion authorizing you to sign all non-disclosure confidentiality agreements going forward.
Just a simple motion that we do authorize the mayor to sign non-disclosure documents for economic development in the future?
Well, it, it doesn't need to be limited to economic development.
Okay. Any non-disclosure in the future.
I'll make a motion. Let me do that.
I already made the motion.
Oh, you made it. I'll second.
Valerie's second. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Brandon. Thanks for finding that out.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, I think I'm finally back on the right. Now, we're at item 12. At 7:52, we'll recess into workshop. First item on the workshop is discussion regarding strategic plan. That's Gabe Ray.
So, mayor and council, I'll be very brief. This is an activity that you all have been engaged in for the past several months. I'm bringing this, and this was in the packet, so this is public information. We've talked about having a strategic plan. This is a draft strategic plan. I will draw your attention to a few things. Number one is that we have a vision, Saginaw Vision 2033. In 2033, Saginaw will be a hometown choice for families, will be a beautiful community with vibrant commercial corridors and activity centers and a strong local economy. Saginaw residents will enjoy great neighborhoods with quality, affordable housing, abundant leisure facilities, and programs for all, and easy mobility. So, I'm just giving you this document, telling you that in the future, we'll come back and talk about it. The, the question might come up, where did all this come from? And the answer is Socratic, in that it came from you directly, right? You met with Lyle Summick individually. All of these items in this document are directly from all the members of the council. You'll recall back in the fall, we had a one-day workshop with Lyle, where there was a voting system. So, all of these principles were, were a majority of the council, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Some of this came from our citizen input as well.
That's correct. So, part of the process, we had a citizen summit in July, where many of these key themes, you'll see, came directly from citizens. The next step for us, I will bring this to the council and request that it be adopted by resolution in the future. The kind of nuts and bolts part of it is an annual action plan, which is a, really a list of projects for staff that you say, okay, these are what staff should be focusing on for the next year. And, and one step at a time, that's how we climb toward our goals. So, I really don't have anything more, other than to, let's think about this, and welcome feedback. At some point, we adopt a, a strategic plan in the future.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, just, do we have a timeline in mind for a plan? Because I know we're getting into budget season, and it would certainly be nice to at least have some roadmap, or between the ditches, between the, the yellow lines.
Sure. So, I think that we still, staff still has some work with Lyle to finish up the action plan. I intend to, when I get back from my trip, our second March meeting, to have our first budget workshop. We did the budget over a series of months, topically, and in a workshop setting, to get feedback, to make no decisions. So, April, probably, I'd like to bring this back to the council. That's my intent.
All right. Any other questions, council? All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Moving on. Item number 14, discussion regarding solid waste and recycling program. For that, Norm Boulosch and Marty Grant, Waste Connections. Gentlemen, thanks for waiting us out so long, but welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
While they're handing out this information, just as a, a little reminder of why we're here tonight, Waste Connection's been providing our solid waste and recycling pickup services since 2007. We had an initial five-year contract and five years' worth of extensions on that. So, since that time, we've been doing annual extensions of the contract, and we, we did approve an extension last September. At that time, we told you all that we'd be coming back to you all with this information to discuss. This is a good time to, to discuss potential options for the council to consider, if they wanted to, different types of the services that they can provide, whether, you know, whether that be automated service, continue the way we are, that's strictly up to the council. But we're looking for some policy direction tonight from the council, as we begin to plan our next contract renewal or extension, whatever the council's pleasure is on that. We have some things we'd like to change in the current contract, so we'll be taking a look at that, having the city attorney look at that, working with them. And, but at, but at the same time, as I said, this is an opportunity to look, see if we want to continue doing the, we can things the way we're doing them now, or if we want to do things differently, and what the costs are associated with those potential changes. So, Marty and Norm are here tonight to, to give you those numbers and give you some information, so y'all can be thinking about these things. We don't expect a decision tonight, but we, we would like to get some direction on y'all's feelings, on where you want us as a staff to be heading in providing this service.
Okay. Thank you, Dolph. My name's Marty Grant. I'm the district manager of Waste Connections out of Holtham City. I live at 1032 Barvuda Trail in Fort Worth, Texas. Norm Boulosch is my sidekick here. We currently operate 110 routes a day out of Holtham City, and we service 27 city contracts that we've had, a lot of them close to 20 years, which I'd like to thank Norm for that, with his years of relationships with the cities and its integrity. He's kept some really good contracts for our hauling company. Once I go through this presentation, there's no secret, you'll be able to figure out my favorite selection of the options. But honestly, I really, at the end of the day, it really comes down what the residents really want. Right now, there's many different things going out there with our 27 cities. We have people once a week, twice a week, recycle bins, recycle carts, bulk waste, biannual bulk waste, monthly. I mean, it's, it's just all over the board. And quite honestly, the city of Saginaw is pretty much normal with what a lot of these cities have and are used to. So, that's why, when we talk about changes, it's usually not a real easy thing to get residents real excited about. But I will say, once you make that change, and what we've seen, not only at our location, but across the nation, I've been in this business for 25 years, and it's kind of evolved over the years with newer equipment and different ways of servicing trash and recycling in our communities. So, I've never seen a city that went into the direction of more automation and recycling with carts and trash with carts. Once they go to that, usually the first thing they say when a contract's up is, you're not going to change that back, right? So, and that's just my honest opinion. But again, there is, people do, don't always like change, and there is a hurdle to get over when you make a change like this. You will get phone calls. We will get phone calls. But right now, there's a, there's probably a thousand people a day moving into Texas. We get calls every day from people who move from other cities, other states, who want to know, where's my cart? Where's my recycle cart? You know, all these things that they're used to in other cities. And we have to actually look at what city they're in and let them know if that service is provided or not. Okay. Some of the options we discussed, stay with the same services now. Add carts to the recycling only, or add carts to the recycle and the trash, and move the trash to one time a week, and then move the bulky and brush pickup from biannual to monthly. Okay, option one, that's the current service right now at 1196 per home. And every resident gets twice a week trash. We use the customer cans or bags, whatever they throw out there. And it's used, it's picked up by the rearload truck on the bottom left, which is a lot more manual-type unit. The one on the right is a side-load automated truck, which, all the manpower is that little yellow thing on the side of the truck. It does all the heavy lifting. And it's a lot more expensive truck, but it's a lot more efficient and a lot more safe. The second option, or, I'm sorry, what does option one look like? You can see some photos there of some different cities. Some of those might be Saginaw, it might be other cities, but you can see the bags and the cans and the different debris laying around on the streets. That's kind of what it looks like. There's some more photos. You can see trash day. There's just kind of debris and bags laying all over the place. Option two, the only change here would be with the recycling. Again, the trash would stay twice a week. We would still use the customers' cans or bags, and it would be picked up in a rearload truck. The change here would be getting rid of the 18-gallon bins, which, you know, those started years ago in the recycling business, and almost all cities that have recycling are switching over to the 65-gallon carts. More capacity, it's cleaner, it's easier to pick up, and so forth. Also, the brush and bulk would stay the same as it is right now, picked up on a twice-a-year basis. Option three, this would be the major change for the residents, but the more efficient way, in what a lot of cities are going to and what a lot of residents are used to that move in from other states and other cities. That would be changing the trash to one time per week, and we would supply the 95-gallon carts, and it would be pick up, picked up by the automated-type truck with the arm. Just like the other option two, the recycle would stay the same once a week, but we would add the 65-gallon carts, and we would provide those carts. However, we would move the bulk and the brush to a monthly service, rather than biannual. That way, if any of the residents had any kind of large debris or something that they couldn't fit into the cart during their weekly pickup, it would be picked up on whatever their week their bulk would be scheduled, each month. What does option three look like? As you can see here in the photo, there's the driver sitting in the truck. Looks pretty lazy there. He's not working really hard. The truck's doing all the work for him, driving down, staying on one side of the road, picking up the carts. Here's another street showing how the carts all line up and what the city streets kind of look like. Every street's a little different. This photo, we, we get a lot of questions about what, about vehicles in the road and so forth. As you can see in this photo, this, this city is automated, and there's cars parked in the street, and the truck can actually pull up. It extends to the cart, picks up the cart and dumps it in the truck. So, there's no concerns there as well. There's another, just showing a street with both recycle. That's actually the city of Fort Worth, who has, I live in Fort Worth, so that's, they provide once a week trash with recycling in an automated-type vehicle, and they have monthly bulk as well. Okay, the benefits of, of the automated service is, number one is safety, increased collection efficiencies, convenience, easier for the residents to store and transport their trash and recycling, clean neighborhoods are more attractive, controls unwanted pests and animals. Customer favorites, it's easy to roll out containers on wheels, lids attached to both containers, no litter blowing around, streets look nice on collection day, and containers are maintained by the service provider. Overview, just improved working conditions for the refuse driver. I mean, decreased employee injuries, less drivers' turnover. A typical driver in the waste business, the way we pick up trash right now is, probably is going to work in his mid-20s to mid-30s. With an automated truck, you have gentlemen that, and ladies, that can work into their 50s and 60s. Because again, the truck's doing all the work. All they're doing is operating a piece of machinery. Prevents blowing garbage and debris around the city when we're picking up the trash each day, eliminates dogs and other type animals getting into the containers, and it just makes the city look more uniform. The overview, the setup cost for this is all paid for by improved safety, decreased work injuries, improved employee turnover, and improved customer service. The actual cost to do this, if we go to the fully automated, is $2.2 million. The time we buy, we'll have to buy four new trucks, two for recycle, two for trash. They'll all look identical to that one with the arm on the side, and we'll have to buy at least 14,000 brand-new carts to service the city. I will say that, again, I'm an advocate of automation, but I also know it's a major change. Two years ago, me and my wife went back home for Christmas, and so happens, my mother-in-law and father-in-law's city was changing to automation. Obviously, I had to talk about work during Christmas dinner, which I didn't like doing, and it was, it was with the provider, that's not our company, so. But they were totally against it, didn't like it, no matter what I told them. But two years later, I ask them what they think of it, and they have no problem with it, and they, glad they made the change. So, it is something that, I will say, a lot of residents have concerns with, but I think once they get it, I think they really like it. Has anybody got any questions?
I have a question. On your cart here, it says 95 pounds, but then on your overview, it says that they drag 50 to 60 pounds per home. So, if we go from two down to one, what, if somebody has 120 pounds of trash, what do they do with that extra trash until the next week? Because we can't sit it out front? We can't have trash cans sitting out there or anything?
Well, well, the cart is 95 gallons, not 95 pounds.
Okay, but.
Okay. And then the trash is 40 to 50 pounds a day they pick up.
Okay, but if, just say a family of six or something has more, like 120 pounds of trash, or whatever it is, and it doesn't fit in that container.
Right.
What are they going to do with that?
Well, in most, well, in all the cities, they can purchase a set, an additional cart if they would like, and there's a fee for that, yes.
And how much does that cost?
Right. But I will say today, you know, my operations manager, you know, I told him I was coming to this meeting, and I said, hey, could you tell me what the weights are per home, per week? And I already know what the weights are going to be in a range. I mean, every home across the nation, I don't care where you pick up trash at, it's 40 to 50 pounds a week is what they generate on average. Recycle is anywhere from four to six pounds. So, when he gave me my numbers for Saginaw, it was 43 pounds per week of trash.
Per week or per day? Because we get two pickups.
Per week. It's for the whole week. So, what happens with two weeks? What happens with twice-a-week service? A lot of people, believe it or not, only use it one time.
Well, that's only me and my mom, and we use it twice.
Right. Well, and some people do.
And I got a big can.
Some people do, and some.
That's why I'm concerned, because I see a lot of trash sitting around.
Our trash drivers on twice a week, they love the second day, because it's very light.
It's usually lighter.
Yeah, because it's usually a 60/40 split, you know. But you're right, there are some people that generate more trash.
And so, if they want to buy a second can, what is that going to cost that person, about, average?
Probably three to five bucks for a, for an additional can.
And the one thing about the recycling carts, as you, you have the bins now.
Right.
You'll recycle a lot more, and your trash will go down.
Okay.
That amount of waste will, because I do it at home. We toss everything in recycling, and my trash, we don't have a lot of trash. I mean, we have trash, but it's not like it was when I had a bin.
So, do you have a, you have a cart now at?
Yeah, at home, yeah.
Where's that?
I was just wondering, because I see a lot of people, they have like seven or eight trash bags, and then they got their recycle on the other side. They got two of them, or whatever. So, that's what I was curious about.
But it just, you will recycle a lot more. I mean, you just, that's just your nature. You know, you want to recycle now, but you got an 18-gallon bin, you know? So.
I was just asking.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a good question. And ninety-five gallon cart holds quite a bit of trash compared to a container someone buys at Walmart or Lowe's or Home Depot or something like that. I mean, you can get four to five large black garbage bags in those containers.
And again, we're not trying to, we're just trying to tell you, we're trying to, not trying to sell you. Because my, my mother, she was eighty years old and she dropped about the cart, but she, she did it pretty good, you know, over a period of years. Anyway, it's, they say it's commercial, but it's not. It's better than taking it, carrying trash out.
Well, I'm all for automation. My brother was on the trash service at Fort Worth forever, you know. But I just wondered about these other families, because some people on Trash Day, they got a big old pile, like that one picture, you know, every, both times. So that's what I was worried about.
Yeah, and again, that's where, like, when I'm in Fort Worth, I see everybody put their carts out for their trash and recycle. And then I, so happens, my week is the first week of the month, so that's when you see those other piles out.
The big bulk.
And that's when the other truck comes around and picks those up.
And on the big bulk days, they just set it out there like we would?
Yes, just the same way.
That's what I wanted to know.
So I saw that the cost per, per week, or per month, I guess. So what about if we switch to fully automatic, automated? What would be the cost for the city? Is there any outlay from the city?
From the city?
The city of Saginaw, any outlay if we switch over to fully automatic, automated, sorry?
It, it would go down roughly thirty or forty cents a home, I think, is what...
At a home, but there wouldn't be no outlay from the city of Saginaw?
There's no capital investment from the city. They purchase the trucks, they purchase the carts. And we would pay a slightly lower rate than what we're paying now.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my question. I will make sure that the city was not spending any additional capital. Okay.
Unless you want to...
Mayor, I would add, though, that if, for them to make that type of investment in capital would require a multi-year contract. I think at least five years they would request with an extension, possible five-year extensions for them to be able to recoup that investment. So those are the types of issues that we can talk about if we get a direction from council one way or the other. But again, tonight, we just wanted to get y'all's feelings on, on how we should start these negotiations. We don't want to bring you something that you're totally against. I mean, if we can eliminate some of these options now, let's do that.
David, you have a question?
Do you guys have any idea how, what the life expectancy of one of those vehicles is? If part of your large investment is buying four new trucks, do they expect them to be a five-year, seven-year?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years is a truck, and the carts are eight to ten years.
Okay, and so if you're asking, say, for a five-year, you're not necessarily asking for us to repay for that truck in five years, it's just...
We, we would hope...
Your knowledge that you're going to get that kind of contract.
Right, and, you know, and that's why, I know Dolph brought up the five-year with the five-year, that's to protect the city in case they want to get out of the contract for whatever reason.
Sure.
Obviously, we're going to do the best job we can to retain that contract so we can still utilize that equipment.
Yeah, okay.
Is that big truck going to be able to go into courts? I know that's a silly question, but I see, I, my trash truck, when he pulls in, he has to back up, but back, but, but he does it four times before he gets out of the court. So everybody don't park down...
If we, wherever we couldn't get into that we're in now, we would just have to send a different truck to take care of those customers.
Okay. I just wondered, because some of the courts are kind of tight.
You're exactly right.
You're going around, and they're kind of big trucks.
I don't know, I've seen them back through, they back down my side streets to pick up trash, so...
Well, I just see the one natural truck now, and he backs up three or four times before he can get all the way around the curb to get out.
But the one amazing thing about my operations numbers today was, we have a city that we do automation once a week. And your pounds per home with recycling and theirs was the same exact, which was kind of, now, your, your recycling was a little less and your trash was a little more. But their recycle was a little bit more and their trash was a little less. But he, he almost kind of chuckled when he seen that, but...
Well, it becomes a lifestyle, too. We, we have to learn to recycle more than we have been.
Will this be something that's brought before the citizens before, or is this...
No, that's a council...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Policy, just...
Thank you.
Patrick, you have a question?
Yeah, could, could this be something that we just put out online as a, just a quick, just like we're doing with our eat-out or dine-out thing? Just say, "Hey, what do you like?" And just let them, just see what it looks like. Just get a feel from, I like the idea of one day a week. We don't use it twice a week as, as the Farr family. And I like the idea of having once a month bulk trash pickup, because I know, I think we probably get more often than not asked the question, "When is the bulky trash pickup day?" Because everybody accumulates stuff that doesn't fit in the trash bins, so. And I mean, I certainly like that option.
I've got a whole garage full of stuff.
I know I've got an attic full of stuff, I'm being asked to remove all of it, but...
I think Mr. Blackton has a question.
But I got another question before we move on. So hypothetically, if we make any kind of change, what are timeframe? Because I know it takes time to do this work. What, what, just for the council's information, what kind of time would be looked at? And I, maybe Dolph would...
Well, first of all, on our, on our side of it, obviously, we'd have to have an agreement in place before we order the trucks and all that. And we can have the carts and trucks within sixty, or the carts within sixty days set up to be delivering everything. The issue is going to be the trucks, because going to this type of apparatus and this kind of equipment is such a demand across the country right now, we're probably looking at four to six months to get the trucks.
Mayor, I asked that very question, and Marty emailed me back, that if we did go with automated, that we'd need a contract executed by June one, because our contract expires October thirty-one. So we'd have a November one start date with the new service. And obviously, there'd be a lot of, of public education involved in this. We need time to get all that done ahead of time as well. So if that's the way that the majority of the council's leaning in having to start to look at this, then, you know, time's ticking, we need to get started on this fairly quick.
And that's, right, did they get the truck on November first?
And I wanted to bring up one more thing, too. Again, we would love to go fully automated. But we got one city we're working with right now that's going to do the recycle first to get people used to it. And then they're going to talk about the trash at a different day. Personally, I'd rather go all in and do it, but that makes sense to...
But if you did it that way...
It would still take you six months to put one in place as well as two, so...
I might be able to get those two trucks a little quicker than the four that I was going to ask for. But I, I mean, that's just what some cities are doing, is saying, "We're going to do the recycle with the cart, get them used to that, and then we'll go to the trash sometime later during the agreement."
I think it might be easier doing both at once.
That's, I mean, I totally get them all used at once. But I'm just, again, different cities, different decisions.
All right, Mr. Lake, you have a question?
Citizen has a question.
Hope you don't get too tired of me, but I had another question. When we first moved here, I had to do quite a bit of cleanup. And I was feeling like twenty to twenty-six bags every week for several months. And they weren't real happy with the picking it up, but they did pick it up. But it was a lot of debris. Backyard stuff, they had just been left there. Some of it was heavy, some of it was light. But these were thirty-six gallon bags. So how would you handle that much?
You, you would put as much as you could out weekly, and then on your monthly bulk week, you put out your thirty bags and we would pick it up.
On the monthly pickup.
Okay. On that bulky pickup, is that down to the cutting, the forefoot and all that stuff and tying it up and everything, or is it just sitting it out there?
If it's brush, but I mean, you could put furniture, you could put...
Anything else.
Chairs, you know, workbench, you can...
That's the one that uses the big claw on and pick up piles of trash.
If that's trash from feeding, that's going to be pretty smelly. You'll have to save it for a whole month.
Yeah.
For, and for the bulk, you would put...
For that much trash.
There was food or stuff and stinky trash.
Yeah, there's a lot of stinky stuff, dead animals and stuff. It's going to smell pretty bad if you had to hold it for a whole month.
We're hoping it is the bulky waste, not municipal solid, I mean, like food...
Food waste and stuff like that.
Where you're hoping not to be that, too much food in your bulky waste pickup.
Well, we've had animals die in our backyard who we had to dispose of, so...
Well, we could always do special pickups as well. Was that more for like a move-out or move-in, or?
A move-in.
A move-in, because we have customers call all the time for move-ins and move-outs, and we'll do special pickups just to come and get rid of their debris.
Okay.
Sandy, you have a question?
I have one quick question. You had talked about norm, the, people have a tendency to recycle more. And I'm always trying to look for efficient ways to handle things. Why don't you use the ninety-five trash, ninety-five gallon trash cans for both the recycle and the trash, and then maybe use a different color, and then you could have...
I'll let Marty answer that question.
Okay.
You know, what we do, throughout of our, we just do sixty-five gallon recycling, but I guess enough part, enough part of the...
It's really for inventory reasons mainly, because all of our cities have sixty-five and ninety-five, so if we start offering other sizes, then you're going to have different inventories. And it's better to work off of one inventory rather than multiple sizes.
Well, I was just thinking, if you had all the same, everybody had the same size, the ninety-five for the recycle, ninety-five for the trash.
But, but we do have, the carts are different colors, so we would have to, if we went with the bigger cart for one city, we would have to have those bigger carts in inventory for that one city.
Yeah.
Rather than across the board like all of our cities.
I didn't know if that was a direction you might want to head in the future.
Yeah. Right now, I think the sixty-five gallon needs to be enough space.
So...
How much of the little green tubs we're using now?
Eighteen.
How much are those? Those are eighteen gallons.
Eighteen gallons, yeah.
So it's, you can get more than three of those in one sixty-five gallon.
Can we do blue and gold instead of blue and green?
Okay, so, oh, Mary, go ahead, Sandy, you have a question?
I just had one more question. The mechanism that you use to lift the two different sized trash cans, are those the same?
Mm-hmm. The arm comes out and picks them both up.
So it's just, okay.
It, it's got a little thing that just comes out and just kind of grabs it and pulls it up.
Okay.
Mary, go ahead.
Yes, I have a long list from residents.
Norm doesn't look too tired of doing her work.
And, and first, I want to say, I've lived here the entire time that you've been, the trash pickup, had the contract with us. I moved in a year before you came on board. And I've been very pleased with your service, and there have only been two times when it wasn't picked up. So that's pretty good. You always hear complaints, but I hear more pluses about your service. Particularly the bulk pickup. And the two times a week. They love the two times a week. There are cities that don't offer that, I didn't realize that. So we're very fortunate to have that. So that would be a drawback. Now, can you explain why option two costs thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents instead of the eleven sixty-something?
Because a, a large part of the savings is changing the trash from twice a week to once a week.
Okay, okay.
That's the big difference.
I get that. So now I'm going to read you the comments that I got.
Okay.
Mailboxes will be blocked. You've probably heard all of these. And I'll just go through it quickly, and not to necessarily get an answer, but just to let you know the comments I received. And trucks can't get the proper angle on some streets, be, quite often also because of the way cars are parked. And that picture you showed with the cars parked, eh, that's not very realistic. Many streets have many more cars parked on the street than, than the slide you showed. And then they're worried about if that lid isn't slammed all the way down there, they, they think that, that won't be picked up. Is that correct? You can answer that one. But I've heard that from a lot of different cities. If that thing is even the slide spit open, it's not going to be picked up. Because maybe the, the truck can't do it, maybe.
That's a different city.
You're probably talking about Fort Worth, right?
I don't know. I, I've just heard that comment.
It's, it's a true statement in Fort Worth, so...
So that would not be the case here?
I don't believe so. I, I would say no, because...
And maybe it's because of the mechanical thing can't pick it up unless it's closed?
No, they...
That's not it? That's just a rule they have?
It's a volume thing with Fort Worth.
Yeah, it's a very strict rules.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't be that way?
No, if it's, if the lid's open, we're still going to pick it up as long as we can pick it up safely.
We've been hoping it'd be somewhat closed.
Right, you, ideally, they would all be closed. But we see all the time in our current situation where people don't even have lids. So, now, in my household, we actually keep our cars in the garage, and we find it difficult to have room for our containers. And these would be much bigger, would they not? The recycle and the trash would be bigger. So I'm kind of, for my own personal reasons, I'm kind of worried about that, because we do have a...
Ordinance.
Ordinance, you know, the, what do you call it?
It's an ordinance that says you can't put anything out in the front.
Yeah, and, you know, we get a lot of complaints about code enforcement, that's what I'm thinking about. You know, people get real upset because the city cites them for not having their trash can out of sight. And so, with it, with them being bigger and people maybe not having room in their garage, and I don't know where they're going to put them, in their backyard, I don't know. But, but let me just continue. And Gabe, did you want to say something about that first?
Just a couple of comments, and these are my own personal comments, but someday I'll pen a, what'll probably be a country music hit. The first line will be, four kids, two dogs, mother-in-law and my wife. So we, when we were in, in Denton, we had a ninety-five gallon trash cart, sixty-five gallon recycle once a week. Four kids, and my youngest are four and two, so we're in diapers. And we, we would fill the cart once a week, but very rarely exceed. So a normal family is probably going to meet those thresholds. As far as storing, the same thing, you know, yeah, you've got to find a spot for your carts inside the garage, which we did. I will say, just for whatever it's worth, when I was in Dennison, the city provided solid waste service. They're now trans, transitioning to automated service for a number of reasons, and, and really because their, Dennison has a high proportion of single-family homes that are rentals. And it became a problem with excessive amounts of waste that a normal family, you can only generate, you know, forty, fifty pounds in once a month bulk waste. So I, I'll say from experience, any change in service, they can attest to this, trash is a, gets people's blood pressure and people's attention, it's sensitive business. But an average family, I mean, would have a hard time exceeding what, what would reasonably be allowed. So, just my thoughts.
Yeah, and one real quick thing, before I miss track on one of them. You mentioned a cart being placed where we can service it. Right now, when customers, we have customers' cans, we're setting it back where it's convenient for us, honestly, which sometimes not where the customer wants their can placed. Because we're putting it back the least, going back to there, we're setting it over there where, with automation, where the customer puts a cart, that truck's going to pick it up and put it right back there. Because he's not going to drive around with it. So the, the customer will learn where they want it, and we'll learn where it's at, and that's where we pick it up at, so...
So it'll get put back where it was?
It goes right back to where we pick it up, and we go on to the next house.
And not hurled across the...
And just to, I had, I just coincidentally was visiting a friend in a neighboring city that does have the automated. She lives on a cul-de-sac. I live on a cul-de-sac. My cul-de-sac is way smaller than her cul-de-sac. When I was getting ready to leave, I had been there for several hours. While I was there, the trash was picked up. All the trash had been picked up, now all the carts, or whatever you call them, are sitting there. And I had to actually pick up one of these things and put it in their yard so that I could get out of the cul-de-sac. So I'm just saying, I think it will be a problem, even if it's put back exactly where it is. it is, it's hard for cars to move, maneuver around these carts before the people have come home from work and put them wherever they can find a spot to put them.
I think that's a case-by-case situation.
Right, but it's, it's a potential...
Address it whenever that comes.
And, and I've just been getting a lot of comments, which I understand, people don't like change. That's what this is. They like it the way it is. They like, now, how often would the bulky be? Once a month? Yeah. They just like being able to put bulky stuff out there every Thursday. They talk about that all the time. You put something out there on Thursday, it's going to be picked up. Most people probably don't need to do that more than once a month if that often. But they like, the way it is now, you could put something out there every Thursday. I'm just telling you what I've been hearing.
It sounds like you've been in the trash business.
So, um, and when you were talking about safety in your presentation, were you talking about safety for your drivers?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And then convenience, what was, why is it more convenient for us? Because we just have to put it out once a week, or what?
A lot's easier pushing a cart out and picking it up.
Okay, okay.
Thirty pounds.
Yeah, okay.
Putting it together.
So if, if we were required to change, which I know we're not, I would prefer option two, personally, I'm just saying.
We're just here to...
So I'm, I was just giving you this input, so you would understand.
Everything you brought up are concerns, and those are legitimate, so, and we would address all those. And I think, once the program started, I think within six months, all that would be taken care of. Because we would learn what we need to do, and I think the customers would start learning what they need to do, and we would be part of that communication. When we deliver the carts, we have flyers and everything with instructions and how to, where to place the cart and those different things.
So how would a resident go about letting you all know what their particular problem might be?
They could call our office.
Just call your, your office?
Eight-one-seven-two-two-two, two-two-two-one.
Okay. So that would be important, I think, for the people to have that.
I have their number, Mary.
Okay.
It's eight-one-seven-two-two-two, two-two-two-one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was all the input I had.
It's on speed dial.
Yeah. Well, people fill up my daycare dumpster all the time on the way.
All right, so we've been going for a while, Council. Uh, what is our guidance? This is not a decision time, this is a guidance time. Council, what is guidance to, to staff? What do we like to...
I would like to see it automated if I, if it was mine.
I like option three.
Three, too.
I like option three. I, I really would like to see maybe a two-week sample request from the community if they have, if they prefer an option. I mean, and don't make it a two-month thing, just maybe a two...
Maybe you could put it on the city website.
Councilmember Farr, what I might recommend is, is maybe, uh, Norm and, and the staff could do a demonstration so that people can see and, you know, live form what it looks like, they can understand the mechanics, roll the cart. I mean, that's, uh, in, in other cities, I've heard this, well, little old lady can't roll the cart. Well, they can, you know, it's, it's a, they're big, of course, but we could probably work with, um...
Could you put it on the Saginaw page and just kind of get a little, like a video?
Little video, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sure. And, and they've done this transition in other cities, so they, they know what's a good approach, so, yeah, we, we can do that.
You haven't been there for a couple of weeks, don't you?
We have a business in Fort Worth. This little old lady can roll the cart.
I mean, I know you're going out of town, but keep...
All right, so, Charlie, what do you think?
I'm all for it.
All right, Cindy?
I think we could probably swing option three if we're going to, if the city's going to see a financial benefit, if we could offer this at like eleven-fifty-one instead of eleven-sixty-one. I mean, you drop the price a minute...
It's the citizens that pay that, so it's the citizens that can see the benefit.
Citizens is going to see the benefit.
You know, I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you drop the price, you know, even a nickel, you know, I think we might get citizen buy-in for that.
Hey, every penny counts.
Mary?
I'm an alfogee. I like it the way it is.
That's fine, fair enough. Um, and I, I prefer option three. I, I realize it'd be a big change, but I think it'd be in the right direction. I think it would take some time, so.
And you've got a long driveway to haul that.
I'm, I'm a little different situation, so I'm not, my wife is not a big fan, but I'll deal with that.
Mr. May, let me ask this question, though. A five-year contract or a three-year contract, is there a, would there be a price difference, a unit price difference if it's a three-year agreement versus a five-year agreement?
Yes.
Can you communicate what that might be? Because I don't know that we can by charter enter into a five-year agreement with them. Now, we, and I don't know that we can do a quid pro quo for the second... On franchise utilities? Okay, and, and they're considered a franchise? Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that if, if we do have some, if there's a legal thing we have to work through three to five years, if there is a, a significant cost increase because of the three-year agreement, it would, it would be nice to know that. But if we can, if we can determine that it is a franchise utility or a franchise service, then I think we can get around the problem.
It's a, it's a city service, uh, as prescribed by the, the state of Texas. We're responsible for solid waste. Some cities do it on, with their own staff, some cities contract it out. So ultimately, we as a city are responsible for the disposal of solid waste according to the legislature.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So do we have guidance? I think we've got guidance. Let's see, let's start putting this together and see what it looks like. Gentlemen, thank you. Thanks for your time, thank you for staying late with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for your business.
Thank you.
All right, so at eight-thirty-five, we're back, reconvened from, uh, into regular session. Now, also at eight-thirty-six, we'll dismiss into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one dot oh-seven-four Personnel Matters, City Manager.
I'm trying to do that to me last Thursday, I like killing me Sunday.
Oh, my hands now, I've been in that room.
Oh, so that's the excuse, okay.
Okay.
Where's Mary?
Where's Mary?
I don't know, should she go home?
Oh, she didn't go home.
Wrong door, Mary.
We back on, Dolph? All right, at eight fifty-five, we reconvene back in executive session. I will entertain a motion.
Your honor, I will make a motion to approve what we discussed in executive session pertaining to the personal matter on Gabe Raoum.
I'll second that.
Is that the way I supposed to say it?
We might need a little more clarity, just how we asked discussing.
Okay.
Yeah.
The compensation package for Gabe Raoum, as we discussed in executive session.
All right. Charlie, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed or there is none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your honor.
You may adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Eight fifty-five.
We're out of here.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
You're staying late, guys.